Okay, I'll call this regular meeting of the city council to order Tuesday, October the 10th at 6:00 PM. We will begin this evening by turning your cellphones off and then we will have an invocation offered by Josh Widener, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by the chairman of our mayor's youth executive council, advisory council, Roman Garcia. You may stand if you wish.
Lord, we just thank you for this day. We lift you up. I thank you, Father God, that your vision for Kerrville is yet for an appointed time and it hastens to the end. It will not disappoint, and though it tarries, we wait earnestly for it because it will surely come and it will not be behind its appointed day. We just lift up the city council, Father God. We thank you for your vision, Father God, being accomplished here in Kerrville, Texas. We thank you, Father God, for our police officers and our firefighters and every civil servant, Father God, that we have here in this community that strive to make this place a better place for you, Father God, and also for all of us that live in this wonderful place. We bless you and we thank you and we lift you up, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, for getting us started. Item number one is announcements of community interest. Did you want to go first, Mr. Cunnes?
Sure. Just a couple of quick announcements here. We had a very good turnout last Saturday at Home Depot for this year's kickoff of Fire Prevention Week. And it was a lot of fun. Kerrville Fire Department would like to remind everybody, they did this demonstration, there's this little bedroom-like house that they build. They started a small fire. The smoke alarm went off and within six minutes, that thing was totally engulfed and they had to put it out. So it was a very dramatic demonstration of how important the smoke alarms are and just want to remind everybody to have smoke alarms in your house or check to make sure that they're working and if you can't, you need to get them installed or you call the fire department, they'll help you out, but we want to get that done. Another fun event this weekend, the one that you don't want to miss, is the annual Kerrville Chalk Festival. It takes place Saturday and Sunday and it's right out here on Peterson Plaza. This thing is a lot of fun every year. It runs Saturday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It's a free event and you can tell from the pictures and I can vouch from past years that the artwork is truly amazing, something that you don't want to miss, but you've got to see it quick because it's all going to be washed away Monday or Tuesday morning. All right, thank you.
Anybody else have any announcements from council or the audience? If not, Mr. McDaniel has a presentation he would like to make.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask the chief to come, Chief Ned to come over and all these firefighters over here, the police, come on over, fire marshal. This one's for you. So we were at a state conference this past week, the mayor, the councilman, Vokel, myself and the chief and several of the folks here to receive a very distinguished award and we wanted to give it for cities our size and the whole state. And this is for public safety. It has to do with our fire alarm program. You heard just a moment ago from Stuart Cunnes about the awareness that we try to create the community about the fire safety. Well, these guys have put in over 1,000, about 1,017, smoke alarms in our community and they do it in a unique way, which is why they got the award. They don't just say, "Come and get it" or "Call us and we'll come out to install it." They actually block the blocks and knock on doors and meet with people to talk to them about fire safety and the importance of these alarms. And that's why this program has been more successful than others that you might hear about in the state. Our partners in this effort are the Rick Ross and Home Depot and Sheriff's Office and then even our own mayor, Bobby White, who has been promoting this program. So we appreciate all the folks involved, the chief, I can't say enough about your department and what you're doing here. Congratulations. And before we give you a nice round of applause, can you just go ahead and introduce your whole team?
I have with me Division Chief, Emergency Management Coordinator Roger Lafferty, I have the fire marshal. We have our battalion chief, Mark Lowe, Lieutenant from Central Fire Station.
Let's give them a great round of applause.
Now, I want to extend my thanks to, it was kind of fun standing up in front of a couple thousand people for something I really didn't do. All I did was get several of them put in my house and I do appreciate that. So thank you, gentlemen, for coming and joining us this evening. Item number two is the visitors and citizens forum. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. City council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. The number of speakers will be limited to the first 10 and each speaker is limited to four minutes. Bruce.
Bruce Stricki, 821 Earl Garrett. And tonight I'm back again to talk about Kerrville and the influence that you all have on stuff, but I wanted to take a different tact. And again, focused this year a lot on downtown and what's going on downtown. And tonight, Shriner Goods is celebrating six years on Earl Garrett Street in the Shriner Building in downtown Kerrville with tremendous success. And as much as you all and previous councils have done to build up this town and make Kerrville the great place that it is to live, if we just look at downtown, we have folks who have been there just a short amount of time, PAX, Jose Flores has just opened up a new coffee shop that seems to be doing very well. He also offers adult beverages in the evening time, but there are also folks who have been there a really long time, the Kerrville Arts and Cultural Center, Stephen Klack in the Guthrie Building. We look at Ken Wilson and what he has done downtown. The Tomlinson Building is under contract, thank goodness. And so hopefully that'll come together. The Old Jeans have just bought the Heckler Building. The Masonic Lodge sold recently to a new group and that got a three-year lease that's going to bring a new retail outlet out there soon. Rita's Tacos has been there for many years and expanded and doubled their size about two years ago. Francisco Paco has been there, I don't know, you know, how long Paco and Carmen Avery have had that space, God rest her soul. Jeff Conrad with the Ford Building around the corner. And Yobos, Tommy and Jerry, the antique store next door. Windstream, I'd like to see something more happen at Windstream. The Sunrise Antique Mall's been there for many years. Tommy opened a shop down the street, the Pirates and Pretties down there, the Riverview Gallery down on the corner. Of course, Shriner One, office and downtown residents that are here each and every day coming out to visit our restaurants and everything. We go on back down the street, Boblets has been there forever. The Arcadia, I'm still hopeful, I don't know, I haven't heard anything. We'll all be blessed with something there. The city has owned the office that Andrew Muir's in for a long time. Tori Amis has done a great job, she's expanded the Golden Antler, she's opened a new kitchen shop. We have a new eclectic artist, one of the Ishner family, and next to Popo's, we have the Alara Gallery, I skipped, and Crickets, I skipped, I'm sorry. The Rectors have been involved in the city for a long time and now we have Popo's downtown. We have something new coming at the corner at Kevin Sutherland's building. The Wilts, of course, have been here downtown for eight years. Grape Juice, which they proved you don't need parking downtown and in fact, that is a huge myth. There are so many parking places, I can tell you that I have never failed to find a parking place when I've come downtown. Whether I had an office down here, I was coming down like I did today to visit the bank, Texas Hill Country Bank, which just took over the space in Shriner. Cartwheels is fabulous, been there for a few years, I'm telling you, this is an awesome place to live. And that's just downtown. Again, I've ignored the entire rest of the city. And these people have gone out, they've invested their money, they believe in Kerrville, just like all of you who are here tonight and you who are our elected officials. And it takes each and every one of us to work together toward a goal that we want to see because our vision, like these folks who invested in downtown, has to be so much more than just a couple of years. They have to have a vision of many, many years. And as we get ready, Mark, to go on our comprehensive plan and think about what do we want Kerrville to be 20 to 30 years from now, it's so important. And I just want to thank you all for being a part of that process and making this a great place to be. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Thank you. Barbara Burton?
Mayor, while she's coming, I might just say that the Boblets have installed a beautiful new front door.
Is that what that was?
Yeah.
Because I saw the rope, I was like, are they leaving?
It's gorgeous.
I didn't know.
He's my neighbor, he's a great guy. Barbara Burton, 235 Guadalupe Street. Getting old, you know, I can't see you guys without my glasses on, but I can't read this with them on, so. The property next door to me on Hugo Street is a public health and public safety hazard. The property's been uninhabited by humans for several years. The house is imploding on itself. I can count 23 cars in the backyard from the vantage point of my yard. There are colonies of rats and so many mosquitoes that I can't be in my backyard. I've been told that there's nothing in the city's ordinance to keep a person from having a classic car lot, which is how a number of years ago, Ed Perry, the code compliance officer, referred to the place. In June of this year, I saw a rat go over the fence that looked like a small possum. That was the final straw and is when I started in earnest to try to get something done about the place. Danny Batson, Trina Sanchez came to my place to view the pit about a month ago. When Danny saw all the trash and debris stacked on the property, he said, "That's a fire hazard and we can do something about that." Couple of weeks ago, Chris Lee came to my place to eyewitness the pit. Today, Ms. Sanchez, Mr. Batson, and Mr. Lee spoke to the owners and gave them 10 days to clean up the debris. While that may make a difference with the rats, it will do nothing to address the mosquitoes. Something has to be done to strengthen the ordinance to preclude a person from creating a public health and public safety hazard slash junkyard within the city limits of Kerrville. For instance, possibly limiting the number of vehicles allowed and mandating some sort of cover to keep rainwater from accumulating in the multiple small reservoirs of a junked car. I'm aware that in bringing this to you under the public forum heading, there will be no action taken tonight, but I wanted to put this on your radar so that you could be thinking about what might be done to strengthen the current rules. I will be back to council to speak on this subject as an agenda item. Thanks very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Thank you. Clay Lambert?
Clay Lambert, 673 Town Creek Road. I was going down Holdsworth Drive the other evening and had to dodge a deer. I mean, really had to dodge a deer. And I got to thinking about it and this year alone, I think I've dodged and just barely missed six deer on Holdsworth Drive. Last year I wasn't so lucky, I hit one. And as I was thinking about this last week, it occurred to me that I don't believe I've ever been in another city that had a long, big, beautiful boulevard like that that had absolutely no illumination whatsoever. So I'm hoping for this comprehensive plan that something like that would be considered. However, the city just dodged an opportunity and those are one of the things that we shouldn't dodge. By running the affluent lines down the center of Holdsworth Road, there was a contract, obviously, to dig that up and place the pipe, at the same time wiring could have been installed, even if you don't buy the lights yet. But that was a missed opportunity. I think there is one other opportunity available, though, on Holdsworth Road that I hope the city doesn't dodge, and that's the fact that the esplanade in there, in a town, in the hill country where water is a precious commodity, do we really need to put grass in there so that it's a gift that keeps on giving? We have to continue to mow it and maintain it and water it. I would suggest that perhaps someone should look at putting something else, bricks or attractive stone or something, into the esplanade there on Holdsworth so that it's not an ongoing maintenance cost. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. And good ideas from the public, thank you so much. Item number three is the consent agenda. Items number 3A, 3B, and 3C, does anybody in council wish to have any of those removed from the consent agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries five to zero. Item number 4A is ordinance number 201-7-20, amending the budget for fiscal year 2017 to account for the transfer of funds between different funds as previously authorized by city council to account for the proceeds from the sale of the former city hall property and to make other amendments as provided herein. Ms. Yarborough?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is our year-end proposed budget amendment. We have 10 items on there. Item number one was recommended during the adoption of the 2018 budget to move $68,300 to the general asset replacement fund for items to be purchased for the sports complex in 2018. Item number two was a motion to amend the 2017 budget by transferring $75,000 to the general capital improvements fund for the comprehensive plan to be in the 2018 budget. Item number three is to record the proceeds from the sale of the city hall property at 800 Junction Highway to be allocated by city council for future project or projects at a later date. Item number four is to amend the Main Street Fund to record the purchase and installation of the Loopie, the Bass, which was installed in the Louise Hayes Park this past year through multi-year fundraising efforts. Item number five is to amend the insurance reserve fund to record the reimbursement for insurance damage to the hailstorm of 2016 for roofs, vehicles, and other equipment, and also to record the expenses associated with it. And there are more repairs coming in the pending year. Item number six is to amend the general asset replacement fund to record proceeds from asset disposal proceeds, which included insurance reimbursements from some damaged vehicles and accidents and some surplus vehicles that were sold. Item number seven is also in the water sewer fund, asset replacement fund, for the same purposes of recording proceeds from surplus sales and insurance reimbursements for damaged vehicles. Item number eight is the police special revenue fund to record various seizures awarded by court judgments as revenue that was initiated by police department, seizures and record expenses that are allowed by Chapter 59 Penal Code during the year. These expenses could not be determined until the seizures were awarded. Item nine is to amend the grant fund to record the JAG grant expense as stated in the grant documents. And this was an expense that you all approved at the last council meeting as part of it and this will be reimbursed in 2018. And item 10 is to amend the police special programs fund, and this is a separate fund from item eight, which is the program special revenue, to record, again, various seizures awarded through court judgments as initiated by the police department and the expenses related to it and also some LEOS programs. This fund is recommended by our auditors to close because it has a different source of income and revenue and at the close of this, this fund will no longer be in progress and be open.
Okay, any questions by council?
I have a couple. On item five, you talk about the pending, I guess, expenses. Are those going to be booked in 18 or 17?
They'll be booked in 18 because that's when they'll happen and we'll have to come back and do that again. But it's a matter of timing to get the repairs done.
Okay. And then, it's not stated in the verbiage there, but in the spreadsheet showing item one and two, I think it's more of a semantic question I'm asking, but it says below number two, it says the two above transactions reduce expense in 18 and then increase expense in 17. Aren't we really just transferring revenue from one fund to another? We're not actually applying expense, we're not reducing expense in 18, really, are we?
They would have been expense in 18 as a transfer out. That's where they originally were booked in the proposed budget.
Okay, but this amendment is actually just moving revenue, is it not? You know what I'm saying? Maybe I'm asking the wrong question, but...
They're recorded as an expense going out and a revenue going into the fund that we're moving it. So when we're moving it out, it is an expense.
Okay, that's good enough.
And I had a question just about number three. I don't know what account 70-6901 is, but for the proceeds of the sale of city hall, is that a reserved account? Is there a way?
No, that's just a revenue coming in because that closes into the fund balance at year-end. And it has to be shown as a revenue coming in. It can't go straight to a reserve balance.
No, I'm sorry, a restricted fund. Is it marked, is that restricted?
It is just setting in that fund for y'all to determine what you want to do with it, it's not allocated for anything.
But there are some restrictions.
Yes, there are. Okay, that was my question. Okay. Any other questions by council?
I'd just like to say that I think this is a great idea. We have done this in the past, we need to do this.
I like that, too.
We need to amend our budget so that always the citizen's going to tell where the money came from and where it went.
I like that addition as well. Okay, if there's no more questions, I will ask for a motion to approve ordinance number 201-7-20 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion is second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Item number 5A is a public hearing. I do have a recusal, Mr. Vokel has filed a conflict of interest affidavit, so we'll wait till he's gone from the room. Okay. Item number 5A is annexation and zoning classification for an approximate 7.95 acre tract out of land adjacent to the incorporated limits, which is out of the F. Rodriguez survey, number 72, abstract number 280, Kerr County, Texas, located at 5263 Highway 27. Ms. Consul?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item comes before you as part two of a two-property annexation known together as the Fox Tank property. As you know, we do have restrictions in our state statute relative to our annexation process and this begins the process tonight with the city council and also allowing us to, at the same time, apply the zoning classification to the property. Because of the zoning question, we did take the item to the Planning and Zoning Commission that has recommended approval. That was September the 7th. Tonight, as I said, is the first public hearing. Your second public hearing, then, within the timeframe that is required by the annexation statute, would be October the 24th to meet our windows of constraints there, with the first reading on November the 14th and the second reading on December the 12th. This is the property, as you can tell, it is basically sandwiched in between existing two areas that are already within the city limits and we would be applying the same zoning classification, the E26, that is adjoining, that is on the existing Fox Tank property. And this is just a survey of the property to be annexed. And that's all I have for you on this item.
Are there any questions by? If not, I will open a public hearing at 6:23 39. If anybody from the public wishes to speak, this is your chance. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but you're welcome to forward any questions. Hearing done. I'll close the public hearing at 6:23. There's no action required on this agenda item, so we will move on to item number 5B, which is...
Get Mr. Vokel back in.
Sorry?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, we better have our council member back. He's so quiet, we don't miss him. Thank you, George. Okay. Item number 5B is public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 201-7-19, a zoning change to amend ordinance number 2004-15, which created a planned development district for an approximate 536 acre tract of land out of the Walter Fosgate survey, number 120, within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and generally located southeast of the intersection of Farm to Market Road 783, Harper Highway, and Interstate 10. Said amendment to adjust the authorized uses between two defined areas within said district, said areas located adjacent to and north of Holdsworth Drive. Ms. Consul?
Thank you. This item comes before you this evening because the applicant would like to amend the existing PD planned development zoning that has been on the property for a number of years to add on one of the tracks, on one of the sites, fuel sales, and on the other site, hotel use. The existing zoning, which is PD, shows these two areas, which I will refer to as subareas because they are currently zoned PD. The request is simply to keep the underlying PD classification and to add these two uses on top. There was a little bit of confusion as to the property description. We notified for the entire property that was zoned at the same time of annexation, simultaneously done at the time of annexation in 2004. The entire property, though, was under review for a number of years before then, started in 2001, had a lot of study and analysis at that time before the property was finally zoned PD. Most of it was in a, let me go ahead and show you the zoning map for the PD classification that showed a lot of mixed use, well, it showed mixed use, a lot of residential, single family, and then commercial along Holdsworth. As you know, however, with the evolution of the property to have a significant portion of it devoted to the sports complex, that essentially really lowered the impact, the impact to public infrastructure, to the roadway system, to any need for public water and public wastewater in the area. The remainder of the property still remains in the, actually, all of it remains in the PD classification, so the portion that is not within the 26 acres that is before you this evening remains in that single-family classification, which is also itself a subarea. So the two tracks, I refer to them as two tracks because the original zoning had them shown as two subareas, Subarea 1C and Subarea 4C, currently cut by the existing Calo Boulevard and Home Run roads that are not yet dedicated to the public. They have been reviewed and inspected as public infrastructure and at the time of plating will be dedicated to the public. So essentially, right now, both of these tracks have a list, a wide range of commercial uses that are currently permitted on each tract. The Site 1C permits hotel use as well as that broad list of uses that I referred to that is also in your staff report. Track 1C permits fuel sales, but Track 1C does not permit fuel sales and Track 1C does not permit hotels. So essentially, what the applicant is proposing is to switch and allow fuel sales then on Lot 1C and a hotel use then on Lot 1C.
4C.
I'm sorry, 4C. And again, just to take a look at the entire property, as you can tell, there was quite a bit more single-family residential that was proposed back in the past. There was a little bit of confusion when we sent out the notices because we did send notices within 200 feet of the entire property and not just within the 26 acres that are before you this evening for the amendment.
And would that be standard practice?
Yes, because right now, the...
Because it's all part of 1PD.
It's, right, it's all part of, same ownership.
And were you able to ascertain from minutes of old meetings or hearings whether there was any reason that 4C was not permitted fuel sales and 1C was not permitted hotel in the first place?
I looked at the minutes, there was not a lot in the actual minutes of the meetings. There was some discussion, I could tell, at the staff level when that analysis was conducted. There was some discussion, I could tell, at the staff level when that analysis was conducted, the, the reviews and extensive back and forth on, on review of plans and commenting on plans. I did not see anything relative to the hotel. At, at, back at that time, there was, there was question and concern about the fuel sales. So you'll see in the existing PD, there's actually, there's actually a whole page of additional restrictions for the fuel sales. But as far as specifics on, on why it was not permitted on the smaller lot, on Lot 4C, I didn't see any, any reason for that.
Originally, Sabina, there was a 2C as well that had, that was a commercial tracked south or east, I can't tell which way it was. It was to the right of your 1C. And that was allowed to have hotel. So I don't know if they're switching, nothing is switching on that. Have you combined them? I don't see a 2C on here.
That is correct, that the, that the underlying, basically, the only two tracts that are, that are affected, it would be 4C and 1C, not 2C. And 2C is to the east of 1C.
And so the changes that we have on here for number seven that we were given here before the meeting from the, the corrected amendment, a retail fuel sale business may be located and operated on property in the area of 1C or area 2C.
It already can.
I know, but that's what I'm reading in this highlighted yellow. This isn't changing?
No, it is. The blue.
The blue is saying or 4C.
Okay, I can't see anything in there.
Yeah, that's what it's saying.
Oh, there's something in there.
That's what it says.
It looks like it was scratched out. Okay.
I got a couple of questions. One, the, the, if the PD is still in effect, why, why did none of this get talked about when the athletic complex was put in? Because the area that it's covering was completely residential. So when I looked at this first, I kind of wondered why we're even messing with the PD in the first place because it seems to be invalid at this point. But that's just a thought to think about. As far as to Ms. Summerlin's question about why they didn't have fuel sales in 4C, it appears, because that's the reason I, I had asked to see this original ordinance, it appears that the, the 2C that was there to the right of 1C, and then the 1C and the 4C were done for certain reasons. But if you look at the ordinance originally about fuel sales, it says that no fuel sales in 4C. And if you're gonna put fuel sales in 1C, it had to be no closer than 300 feet to that northwest corner. It appears that what they were doing, and P&amp;Z at their meeting actually talked about this, was trying to avoid putting fuel sales close to the creek. So a certain distance away. So with that...
But it's funny now, isn't it? I mean, 1C seems farther away from creek runoff than, than 4C.
Right, so that's the reason it's allowing it in 1C. See, right now, 1C has already got fuel sales.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And so, so 1C, it specifically says it can only be in the, you know, 300 feet from that northwest corner of 1C, which is somewhat vague, but, but that's, that's basically saying that wants, it wants fuel no closer than 600 feet to the creek, because that's really what that distance is. And if you take 1C down to the creek across where the soccer complex is, that's roughly 600 feet also. So I believe that was the intent originally of the fuel sales thing. As far as the hotel not being in 1C, the best I could get was looking at all the land uses that they defined. They specifically kept it out of 1C because I believe the, that area of 1C was seen as sort of a special one close to the residential because there's also in that original ordinance, the need for, the requirement of a berm or at least an eight-foot wall around 1C bordering the, the residential part. And so they were trying to keep that sort of, I guess, lower visibility and lower sound, I think is what they put in there. So when we're considering adding hotel to that, that I think is what our consideration is as far as whether that should be in there. I think the fuel sales question in 4C, allowing that in there is, I think goes against the original intent of that ordinance, the PD.
Sabina, what did planning and zoning think about 4C? Did they, were, were they satisfied that the heightened restrictions would protect the creek from fuel leaks?
Well, at, at this point, the Planning and Zoning Commission focused on, on the difference between the existing zoning, the zoning that's in place today, and, and the additional, the request of the, the additional uses on each site, one on each site. And recognize, I, I believe, I'll summarize, that, that it was relatively, a relatively low impact.
Risk.
Difference. Well, the, the, that the uses were...
They approved it, right.
They recommended approval, yes.
And I listened to the one-hour meeting on that, discussion on that. Mr. Seigerman was part of that. And he's here this evening, I'm sure, could answer questions. But it seemed like what I heard coming out of it is that once this goes, if the use is permitted, once it goes to the review committee, Development Review Committee, there will be sufficient drainage and retaining areas for safety purposes there. The only other question I didn't hear addressed at that meeting that I particularly had, and I think I expressed to Mr. McDaniel, was about the traffic. If you put hotel in 4C or fuel sales in 4C, if that would back up, you know, coming off of Calo Boulevard or Holesworth, either one, would there be, will there be a traffic impact study required before they have approval on that?
This city currently does not require traffic impact studies. Normally, what, in, in other cities where they are required, it basically assists the staff and the decision-makers to draw a line between what should be a public participation cost and what should be the private side. And, and it really is a tool that we currently don't have. So what, what it leaves is real broad-level analysis on the part of the staff. And essentially, what, what we, what we looked at was the relative impact of the existing zoning with the, with the switch, if you will.
Okay, well, what, a couple of other things, back to the 4C and fuel sales. One, the amendment as it's presented doesn't, doesn't eliminate that 300-foot thing from the northwest corner, so we'd have to modify that if we're gonna do that. The other thing is in the other permitted uses of 4C, it actually prohibits alcohol sales that are to be consumed off-site. And I don't know if there's a fuel station anywhere anymore that doesn't sell alcohol in their building. So that would have to be modified as well. And I don't know what the reason behind it not being there in the first place, but you couldn't put a, you couldn't put a convenience store in that spot unless we changed the permitted uses also. So...
Would there be any kind of prohibition against alcohol sales within so many feet of a youth sports complex?
In our, in our alcoholic beverage sale regulations, we, we do not know. It's limited to churches and schools.
Right.
That's a good question. Something that could be answered between now and maybe next meeting. Okay, so this is just the first reading and, and public hearing. Any more questions by council at this point before I open the public hearing? Then I'll open the public hearing at 6:39, and members of the public are welcome to ask questions. I don't have any request forms, but you're welcome to do so. Ms. Lipscomb, if you would.
Well, I just have a question about the signage. Because Holesworth is one of the prettiest drives that we have in Kerrville, in my opinion. The view out, and would they be allowed to erect a tall sign like so many of the filling stations have around town? And come up with the garish colors and...
Actually, there are restrictions on their signs.
Pardon?
Yeah, that's part of the heightened restrictions of fuel sales in this whole PD, is limits on the size the sign can be.
It is, but it's not much different than what you normally see.
Now, I didn't pay attention to the details. Did you, George?
Yeah, it's, it's not much different than what you would normally see. Like, you still can have the canopy. You still can have a couple of signs on top. It'll be lit. I mean, I guess it's a matter of opinion as to whether they look awful, but keep in mind that that spot, that particular spot, is actually gonna be sunken down, kind of at the foot, if you will. So it's not, that spot won't probably affect too much of you, but, but there's some restrictions in there.
Well, it's worth keeping in mind, sure.
Yeah, I was just hoping that when all was said and done and they got through, that we could have our blue bonnets and wildflowers reseeded in that drive.
Amen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. They're making those like crazy over there. Any other comments from the public? I'm sorry, Barbara Burton?
I have tremendous concerns about fuel sales that close to Town Creek. Town Creek's one of our major tributaries to the Guadalupe River, as we all know. And I missed in the discussion whose, under whose purview would it be to make sure that there's some sort of containment walls or safety, you know, in the event of a spill? I mean, the whole...
It's already written in to the PD.
Is it, so there would be containment walls? Okay. Because, you know, accident, the very definition of accident is we don't plan on it happening.
And it requires, for example, that somebody be on duty, a human being be on duty at any time fuel is dispensed. So you couldn't have a situation where a leak started and there was no human being there to notice it for hours.
Okay. Well, and as George just said, it's gonna be in a sunken area, and there's this thing called osmosis, you know, it, it will find its way. Thank you.
Any other remarks? If not, I'll close the hearing at 6:42, and we are back in our regular session. And so are there any comments or questions from the council, or will we have a motion? I'll move approval on first reading of ordinance number 2017-19. Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed? Motion carries four to one. Item number 6A is amendment to agreement 2016-95 with the Kerrville Convention and Visitors Bureau for the use of hot funds for promoting the Arts Advertising Committee to add an additional arts group member. I had Ms. Yarborough, but Mr. McDaniel will prepare us for this one.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item comes to us as an amendment to an existing agreement to add another entity, an arts entity, that was, be eligible for funding under this. This is for the promotion and advertising of venues that are arts-related. This is managed by our own Convention and Visitors Bureau. It was a separate contract in addition to their base contract for the Visitors Center. So currently, there's $50,000 that you all allocate out of your hotel tax budget that's used from, for, I think, something like nine entities. And they coordinate timing and placement of all their advertising. They currently actually do, do some advertising as a tourist venue of the Coming King Sculpture, Sculpture Garden already. But this would then add that group to this arts organization, if you will, to be able to weigh in on how the funds would be used with the rest of the group. And because the group is now growing quite large, the funding for this has not, has not grown, although I think this may be the third one that's been added in recent years. So the staff would suggest that if we're gonna add one, that we probably should bump the funding a little bit to 10,000 more, which bring it, brings it to 60,000. So this item is just an amendment to the existing agreement that would then add the additional organization of the Coming King Arts Sculpture Garden, as well as $10,000 more for the Visitors Bureau to use for promotion and advertising.
Okay, so it's a, a two-fold action here. Any questions by council?
Is this the 10,000, is it coming out of the contingency that was in the hot tax?
Yes.
Okay.
So for the first year, we budgeted a $75,000 contingency in the hot fund, and this would be used 10,000 of that.
Okay. And just because I'm not as familiar with what this fund is, is it, how, who determines? Is this, the Convention Bureau determine what advertising they're doing across the board of all? It's like thirteen, this will be 13, I think, members in it, so...
Let's read this, part of the summary statement, maybe that would be helpful. Okay, the Kerrville Convention, this Visitor Bureau must coordinate the committee, that's the committee we're speaking of, the Arts Committee, and host at least 10 committee meetings during the term of the agreement. KCVB must use the funding that it receives from the city under this agreement for the sole purpose of advertising in statewide magazines and newspapers such as Texas Highway, Texas Monthly's AAA Journey, Texas Events Calendar, and regarding exhibits, performances, and specific events at or held by the Kerr Arts. Here are the members. Kerr Arts and Culture Center, Playhouse 2000, Kerrville Festival of the Arts, Kerrville Folk Festival, Kirk County Fair, Kerrville Wine and Music Festival, Hill Country Arts Foundation, Kathleen Calhoun City Center for the Performing Arts, Riverside Nature Center, Symphony of the Hills, Kerrville Chalk Festival, Museum of Western Art, and now, as proposed, the Coming King Sculpture Prayer Garden. This would be collectively referred to as the Arts Group. So they regularly meet, and I think, as he mentioned, and, and Mr. McElvein is here. You would like to answer that, Charlie, please, for Mr. Buridi? Exactly how that's handled, I think, was the question.
Yeah, I mean, really, the question I'm asking is, is it directed advertising for these 13 entities?
Yes, sir, Councilman, that's correct. Now, there's, are no longer 13. Initially, in 2009, when the organization, when that committee was developed, there were 13 members. Since that time, some of them have gone by the wayside. We currently have nine members, and the Coming of the King Sculpture Prayer Garden will be the 10th member. Those, each of those entities have a representative on that council. They make the decision as to where those funds will be spent, on which publications and which events will be advertised.
But that's not all the advertising that the CBB does?
No, ma'am, not by any means. Now, that's just one portion. This, this committee was developed, again, about 2009 because at that point, the council had a lot of individual requests from these entities coming, making individual requests for funding. And so that was developed just to eliminate that continual request.
That's something we used to do, isn't it? We, we'd listen to all the nonprofits
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
and portion out that little pot of money among them.
That's correct.
It just, it seems more efficient to do all the advertising.
And it's not, this isn't part of the, the bureau's budget, right?
No, sir, it's separate from that.
They just administer.
Now, we do, we, we, our, the Convention Visitors Bureau does pay production cost and what have you for the ads. So the entire $50,000 is used strictly for advertising. It doesn't go for production at all, but that, that's how the funds are used.
Any other questions or discussion from council? Yes?
Sorry?
I have great concerns about this, and I'm torn because I'd love to give $10,000 more to advertising Kerrville. But I'm constrained by my loyalty to the principle of separation of church and state. And I think there's just no doubt about, as wonderful as the, as the sculptures may be, the purpose of the garden is religious. And the reports that Mr. Greiner gives us almost monthly are about miraculous healings that happen there and pilgrimages and so forth. And that's just religion in my book and inappropriate for public funding. So I'll have to vote no.
Any other comments by council? I, I do have a number of speaker request forms. Weldon Baker?
First, I want to thank you for giving us this time to express what we'd like to see for Kerrville. I'm one of the chaplain tour guides there. I'm also treasurer of the organization and have been for the last two years. I just want to share a couple of things with you. I don't know where else in Kerrville that you can have the experience that I've had. In January, I had two ladies from Jerusalem, talked to them over an hour. And unbelievable, something tapped me on the shoulder. I turned around... Something tapped me on the shoulder, I turned around, there's five people from Singapore, Japan. I asked each one of them, "How did you find out about the Sculpture Prayer Garden?" Internet, worldwide. We've had 65 countries come up there, we have records of it, and we're exposed all over the world. And we are definite a sculpture garden. Now, they're different than the other gardens, yes, but people come by the interstate, stop, they see the cross, and it's a sculpture. They drive on Benson Drive, they see three more sculptures at the entrance, and they go on up, and there's seven more. It's definite a sculpture art museum. We're classified 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and it's strictly that. People come up, they're inspired, and they, as you spoke, Mary Ellen, that it's a religion thing, but that's people's choices. A lot of people come up just to see the bronzes and the sculpture, they're interested in the arts. And as you know, and all of y'all know, there's so many sculptures up there. And we've just added a new one up there a month ago. So when we get sculptures that are added, like there's plans for the future, which are unbelievable, honoring veterans, we get so many veterans up there that have tourists from our local VA, that just love to get out and get in the garden and have a little peace and quiet time, just to be out in God's world. And this is God's world. And I really appreciate your consideration. We have, as Max has told y'all so many times, last year we had 105,000 visitors. We have a people counter, everybody that comes in, from 65 different countries. We're number one tourist attraction in Kerrville. We really are. I have 18-wheel drivers that come from El Paso to San Antonio, stop their 18-wheelers and walk up, because they want to eat their lunch up there and just be quiet for a while. So I appreciate your consideration. We could, we're adding to the community, and we are about art first, as a drawing, and that's the way it should be, to get people's interest, just to get people's interest. Sculptures always get interest. People that drive down the highway, you see a big sculpture, it just spurs your imagination, you want to stop and take a look. So that's all I have to say, and just appreciate everything that you might consider for us. Okay? Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. Debbie Masars?
Let me just say one thing to him before he walks away. I agree that it probably is mostly about sculpture, but you don't have to be ashamed of it being about religion either.
I know that.
So you just, you can go ahead and say that if you like.
Thank you, George. Thank you, George.
I would say that, I don't know if anybody else had a camera the other day, but just, it would have been nice to have gotten it better than my phone, but I don't know if you recall, it was probably a week or two ago, with the two rainbows that came in.
Yes, sir.
And one of them was just like directly behind the cross. I went to Lowe's, took a picture. If somebody had a better camera, that'd be a nice shot.
I have that on my iPhone.
There you go. Okay, just anyways.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello, thank you for having us here. I just want to say, I'm the administrative director in the office of the Coming King Foundation, and Rosalyn and I, on a, on a weekly basis, get phone calls from people all over wanting to come and visit the garden. And they want to know, not only about the garden, but when they come, they want to know where to eat, what else is there to do in Kerrville. They want to know about the area. They want to know, you know, what else can they do? So we always send them to the visitor's center. We always refer to hotels and restaurants in the area. They're also on our website, so that we let people know where else they can stay, because we have people that come from all over, and they stay for days. Some stay for one night, but some actually come and will stay a week at a time. We had a wonderful couple that came in today, have, on their honeymoon, and were staying in Kerrville, and said that the Coming King Sculpture Prayer Garden was the first on their list. So we welcomed them. And, but I just wanted to, one thing I would like to request, if there is room in the budget for us, is signs on the highway, on Interstate 10 and on 16, that say "Exit Here." Just the brown and white signs, nothing, just, just like a tourist sign, as the gateway to Kerrville, the Coming King Sculpture Prayer Garden. One thing that we do hear a lot is "Exit." People call, "Where do we get off?" So some signs would be very, very wonderful to have on either side of I-10, and then also on 16, because we have a lot of people that come from Fredericksburg as well. Which, which exit, which exit? So that was just one, the one thing I would like to request, if, if there's room in the budget for us. And I just want to thank you very much for your time, and just appreciate you allowing us to be here.
Thank you. We can ask, but I don't think signs on I-10 are under our purview.
It's not, Tech Dot, we did check that out. It would be the city, it would be up to the city, I believe.
Oh, really?
They checked on it. Yes, it would. And signs, wayfinding signs can come out of the hot budget, but that would be another discussion, another time. Right now, I think, to clarify some things, Mr. Greiner, maybe you can speak to us?
Thank you, I'm Max Greiner, and I am an artist, y'all know about that. I'm president of the Coming King Foundation. You may not know, I'm also an architect with a degree in architecture from Texas A&amp;M. I'm also, at age, I think, 26, was the advertising and marketing director for an international California corporation, and I have skills in a lot of those areas. And I think that the Coming King Foundation could help the arts group here by being a part of that and having some involvement in that and helping it be more successful. First, just want to thank the city council for letting us be here and speak. Thank you for that. I want to thank the mayor for suggesting and making a nomination that we might be one of the new members of the Arts Committee. I want to thank Charlie McElvein over there, that has been helping us since he moved to town. And I worked with Sudi Burdette before that, of course, and, but Charlie's been great, and they've advertised for the garden, and they've put out ads, and they've got a postcard with the cross and everything. And so, Charlie, thank you for all that you and your team, you've got a really wonderful team of people over there. 16 years ago, my wife and I got a vision. We believed it was from God. And since that time, we've tried to make that happen. The reason is to bless Kerrville. It's not about money. By the grace of God, Sherry and I have donated over $1 million in cash to put that up there for Kerrville. We've donated over $2 million in artwork. The purpose is not to sell stuff. The purpose is to bless our community, our state, and our nation, and the world. And that is now happening. 16 years later, after all the battles some of you know about, we still here. And we survived that, and this, this particular art park is blessing hundreds of thousands of people. We've now crossed the 100,000 barrier. We've already crossed the 100,000 barrier this month, Charlie, so we're already past where we were last year, at the end of the year. And it's going to continue to grow, and it's not going to stop. And, you know, we are a 501(c)(3), and Ms. Summerlin, we are not chartered as a church, or religion, or a ministry. We are chartered as a 501(c)(3) art museum, exactly like the Western Art Museum and the other art organizations. The state of Texas actually distributes our brochures for Kerrville at all the ports of entry. Because we are an art museum, we are not chartered as a religious organization. And just like the Cowboy Artists Museum chooses to display Indians and horses and cows, we've chosen a different subject matter. And, and so therefore, we are an art museum. You know, the benefits here, in September, we had 14,950 estimated people. In August, we had 17,090 people. 2017, we're going to go way over 100,000. 2016, we had 105,250. 2015, we had 94,000 tourists, 593. Whether we like it or not, it's a landmark. It's a landmark in the United States, in the state. It's being covered all over. It's, it's worldwide. Kerrville is being known for something that's good. And you know, I've been here long enough since '81 to know there's been some bad things that's happened in Kerrville. And it's nice to know that some people recognize us for the good things. The publicity, it's, the garden's already been covered by ABC, NBC, CBS, Fox News, AP, Univision. It's the top drawing tourist attraction in Kerrville, in all the different areas, in the media, and in people. But the reason is, is that we've done this, is we just want to bless people. And so as a result of what's happening on that mountain, all of the businesses in town are getting blessed. I mean, we didn't do it for money. We did it to bless people. But the businesses are getting blessed. Just ask. If you go, I'll get it out of secret. You tell people you're a friend of the cross, and they'll give you a discount at a lot of restaurants right here in town. So anyways, I just wanted to let you know that we appreciate it. We appreciate the chance to be on the committee. We are the largest, have the most expensive art collection, and, and the largest art collection, and we are here to stay. And it's going to continue to bless Kerrville, and the state, and the nation, and the world.
Thank you, Mr. Greiner. We, I think...
I have a question. Max, I've not, I've never quite understood whether you count people or count vehicles and then apply a figure to them.
Yes, well, I passed out that form that will help do that. We have two ways, actually three ways that we count. One of them is a traditional vehicle counter, like the county uses, and you see those black things.
Okay, I understand that.
And we have figured out, after doing all-day, 24-hour counts for over, like, 10 days, that there's 2.6 people per vehicle on average. Now, some of those buses that are coming in have 55 people, and they're only counted as 2.6 people. But we also have a digital counter that the Border Patrol uses, that the museums use, that's a people counter. The deal with the people counters, though, if they zigzag back and forth, you get, it's hard to get the numbers. And we're still trying to get that to match up. But what we're doing is an estimate, basically based on the car count, and that is the best count that we can get. And we know that's a fact of the number of cars, and we do have lots of buses coming, but we're not even counting really those as what, the number of people that are in there.
Well, I guess I remain a slight skeptic.
Okay.
And no doubt, you're getting a lot of people. The question is whether we understand, really understand.
Sure. Well, if you've got a better way for us to count, so we're not charging. So at Disneyland, they charge you. At Fiesta, Texas, they charge you. You get a ticket, you got a hard count.
Yep.
We're letting anybody come, of any background, any religion, any purpose.
Yeah.
And so that's the best we can do. If you have a better idea on how to get a number, and we also have our tour guide chaplains, like you heard, and they meet busloads of people that are coming up there. And most of you guys don't even know those buses are arriving here. I mean, you know, we've been talking recently to the Billy Graham Organization about coming in their buses. I mean, they're going to come by Kerrville. So, I mean, if you have a better idea, I'd like to have it, but that's what we're working with now. And we admit that it is an estimate, but it's, it's the best thing. It's what, what everybody else uses.
Well, not everybody else. I volunteer at Old Tunnel State Park where the bats are. And we have a way of keeping up with how many people come, and whether they see the bats or whether they leave before that. And we keep up with folks, and we, we have specific numbers.
How do you do that?
With people.
But how do you do that? I mean, specifically? Are you counting, make them go through a turnstile?
No, there's one place, there is a throttle, a neck on the place, where you have to go.
Sure, a turnstile.
And, well, we don't have a turnstile, but there's somebody there watching.
Same idea, sure.
Same idea, and it gets a, it quite accurate account.
Sure. Well, we'd appreciate any input you've got on that to help us do better. We'd love to do that.
Parks and Wildlife has a lot of places where those things, they keep records that way.
Sure. Well, we'd love to improve that. I mean, any way that, you know, you would like to advise us, we'd appreciate that.
Okeydoke.
All right, thank you very much. Is anyone else?
Mayor, I'd just like to point out that 501(c)(3) is a, is an IRS code that means nonprofits. My church is a 501(c)(3). I bet yours is, too.
Yes, ma'am, but it's not chartered as a church.
No, I know that, I get that, but I just want to make sure that people understand that the designation 501(c)(3) does not necessarily mean secular. It means nonprofit.
Yes, that's exactly right. And some, but there are ministries chartered, which we did not charter as a ministry. We chartered with the state of Texas an IRS as an art museum, and that's what we are.
And I think, interestingly, the fact that kind of caught my attention is that Tech Dot, you know, allows these to be handed out at the port of entry. And I know they're very conscious of that separation clause.
And that's been going on for about five years, I think, probably.
So in that instance, that, that kind of, you know, all I think we're asking for here, too, you are asking, is a seat at the table in an arts co-op group.
Yeah, that's all we're asking for.
So they can meet once of 10 times a year. And they're already printing postcards and information for this empty cross through the Convention and Visitors Bureau as we speak. So this is just a seat at the table. The extra funding doesn't have anything to do with adding this group. This was just something Mr. McDaniel thought we'd overlooked for a number of years, and maybe Charlie would appreciate. So those are, that's a two-part, two-step thing, and you can, council can consider and do whatever you wish on this. Did, Mr. Cooper, did you want to speak, or has everything been said?
I think everything's been said.
Okay, thank you so much.
Well, Mayor, could we vote separately then? Could we vote on the, including the Christ the King representative and the arts co-op, or, is that what we call it, the arts committee?
The arts co-op.
The arts co-op, and separately vote on the money?
I don't know why not. Or do you know why not?
Make one amendment, not the other?
Right, you would just move approval with amendment, and if it, if it's approved, then it's approved, and then you can have a subsequent amendment as, motion as well.
Let me ask one question while you're thinking about that. Mr. McElvein, did you ask for the extra, or was this just, it's not necessarily needed for this publication? Are you coming short? I know you said we don't have as many groups there as you even did before, so...
We do spend the entire $50,000 each year to commit to this.
So it's all been spent each year?
It would be very useful to be private and promote the arts in Kerrville.
Well, then, Mayor, I move that we vote separately on the increase to the arts co-op and the additional funding. You can ask for an amendment with, to the agreement 201695, with whatever language you want in that amendment, that we approve the amendment as whatever you wish to say. What do I wish to say, Mr. Attorney?
Is there anybody else?
Can she actually make a motion to approve one, and then get a second?
Is that what's clear to what the motion is and what council?
And then can we follow with a second motion to?
Sure.
Well, I move that we increase the budget for the arts co-op by the amount specified in this ordinance, that we amend it.
$10,000.
20162 by $10,000.
$10,000.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, that we amend. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion is second all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Is there a second, is there a second motion?
I make a motion that we add the Coming of the King, I don't know what their official title is, Sculpture Garden, to the arts group members.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries four to one. Okay, item number 6B, are we clear on that, Mr. Hayes? I think we are, okay. Item number 6B is non-exclusive license agreement with the Dietrich Center for Parking and Trailhead for the River Trail. Mr. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, you have a non-exclusive license agreement with the Dietrich Center for Parking and Trailhead for the River Trail. This is the western extension that would take it essentially from the existing nature center over to the Dietrich Center. You will notice that this agreement is very similar to the one that's been crafted for the nature center, where we have an existing trailhead at that location. Essentially, there's a list of business points that have been provided for you within the agenda bill. I'll go through a couple maps here to kind of zoom in. You'll see these sections, these are various sections of the western extension, with the nature center being on the far right, Dietrich Center being on the far left. The far-left box, I'll be zooming in on here. This is the general property where the Dietrich Center is located at. You can see the building outline there. The licensed premises is the area generally shown by the dotted... shown by the dotted lines there. This is a honed-in exhibit that shows essentially the sidewalk coming off to the left, the River Trail exhibited at the very bottom, and various improvements there within that licensed premise. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
What about counsel?
I have one. Just, in the parking lot that is there, if it's, what's the risk, I mean, what's the risk of it being filled up just in normal use by the Dietrich Center? None? I mean, is it not gonna happen?
You know, it's gonna be various timeframes, certainly, where they could have events where it could have heavy usage, really down in this bottom part. The improvements that we'll be making will be the addition of some handicap spaces and changing some slopes. So I'm not sure. I don't know how often those spaces necessarily get filled up, but it will, I think typically they do have additional parking on the other side. So I'm not sure that the entirety of this, it's all that common to get filled up.
I have some thoughts or some questions, because I guess I'm not familiar with the one agreement for Riverside Nature. Explain the annual extensions in item three. It says annually, this license will be extended. And I guess the reason I'm asking is because it also discusses in item 30, if the Dietrich Center decides to sell or lease the property, then what happens? And I know that they're very anxious to work with this. I don't predict any problems, but I'm just curious. Things can happen.
Yes, ma'am. Essentially, it does have, it's a one-year agreement that does have annual extensions, essentially in perpetuity. Either party is able to back out of the agreement with essentially one year's notice.
What happens to the infrastructure, the asset that we put into there? Whatever we, whatever, and small things like water fountains and parking lot improvements, that's fine, but are we gonna have the actual roundabout or whatever we have for the trailhead definition? Are we gonna have any other asset there? It would just be abandoned, or you'd have to enter in another agreement with a new owner?
Essentially, you've got all of the asset within the River Trail easement, obviously would be, continue to be owned by the city, as well as the sidewalk easement that's placed, or right away, sidewalk and right-away easement that's on the far western part of the property. There are some small improvements that are made kind of within that plaza area. You're right, in worst-case scenario, if there were some, you know, extreme situation that, you know, there was a sale that caused there, there could be a loss of some assets. Certainly, we'd be seeking out, you know, if there was a change in ownership, we'd be looking for a good partnership with that entity as well.
And that's the only thing I was thinking. I mean, certainly, it's gonna be going forever, but if they decided to move and expand and grow or something, I don't guess there's any need to have anything written in there to transfer the license.
Yeah, this has been, our understanding from the nature centers, it's been a tremendous asset and helped drive traffic. So we assume that anybody that's in that spot is gonna feel that way.
Worst-case scenario is that we can't come out of the River Trail onto that property, which is just what we do at the state park, or the city park, Shriner Park. Now, we just kind of turn around there, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
So, and just so the public will know that we're, they're working well, according to this agreement here, they're gonna supply the electricity. We lay the lines. We do the, we'll have a water meter there. And there is provision in here, at least for gentleman's agreement, I guess, Mr. Broody's. If there's an event at the Dietrich Center, they'll let the city know in advance. If we have some event at the River Trail, we let them know. So I'm sure that'll work out fine.
Absolutely.
Any other questions by counsel? Any comments from the public? I don't have any speaker request forms here. If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion to authorize a non-exclusive license agreement with the Dietrich Center.
I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Item number seven is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to highlight a few items on the item that's coming down to you right now. This is the, your monthly capital projects report to illustrate the status of each of these projects. The first one I want to highlight is a new item, and that's the parking garage and maintenance repairs. These are the basic repairs to the parking garage that we're already in contract on, and we hope to have some proposal about some work that needs to be done by the end of December.
Excuse me.
Oh, I didn't pass them down, did I?
Oh, we're bottlenecking at the mayor, sorry.
Sorry.
There we go.
I figured you already knew.
So, the firm of M. and S. is now assessing current conditions at the parking garage, and we'll have an estimate in front of you for further consideration and award. The other new item is right below it called Shellhays House Concept. So we've been working with Scott Shellhays, who is the son of the former owner, and he's an architect that has got an office in Lubbock, but he lives here in Kerrville. And so he has agreed to do some concepts for the use of the building. Peter Lewis has done a lot of concepts for the exterior, as well as Water Street and the parking garage. This would take care of looking at what the possible uses might be in the square footage available, what's appropriate for that area and so forth, and bringing back to the staff and certainly the council on some thoughts and ideas around that. So we're proceeding on that as well. Just some quick updates on reuse. You can see the distribution mains and the pond and the pump station are all on schedule for January and the spring of 2018, respectively. And you just heard a comment about River Trail West. Given the approval of the agreement tonight, we anticipate bidding that project this month and award at your November meeting. So moving right along there. Any other questions that you might have on this, I'd be glad to take at your leisure and separately.
We are still on for the field house in October.
Yes.
I guess, any other questions by counsel for the city manager? All right. Thank you so much for that. Item number nine is items for future agenda. Any council member have any item for a future agenda?
I have one, Mayor. I'd like to amend ordinance 102-423, number seven, which is throwing candy from a parade unit.
Oh, yeah.
I knew what happened when we get a youngster. What's the ordinance number?
102-423.
Okay, but isn't that parade? When's that parade?
I'm not sure. The homecoming?
Yeah, when's the homecoming parade? I don't think we get this beat.
You mean the holiday parade.
No, I mean the homecoming.
Oh, the homecoming parade. Let's get ready for that.
Because I asked this question to somebody. I don't think we can beat that, can we?
We have to have two readings for an amendment, correct?
Yes.
Two, two readings.
Yeah.
Well, we'll get it next year.
You're young.
Next year.
Yeah.
Any other items for future agenda? Okay. Hearing done. Then item number 10 is executive, schedule for executive session. 10A is performance review of city attorney. Let's do this. I have several speakers.
Okay. And I'd like to speak before we go into executive session.
Okay, because our, if we do executive, we'll make a motion. Kit Standridge?
Hi, my name is Kit Standridge, and I live at 1049 Creek Run. I just want to speak about the character and integrity of city attorney Mike Hayes. I've known Mike and his family for five years, ever since we moved to Kerrville. We attend church together. Our children are friends, and we've entrusted all of our children to Mike and Melissa's care at different times. Mike Hayes is one of the most honest men that I know. His integrity is evident in his approach to all the things in which he participates, which are many. Mike cares deeply for his community, as manifested by his long service to organizations like Bible Study Fellowship, Kerrville Public School Foundation, mentoring through Kerrville ISD, Partners in Ministry, and also his church. Mike Hayes is dependable, willing to serve, and he is a truth teller. He's a wonderful public servant, and Kerrville's fortunate to have such a dedicated man. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Glenn Andrew?
Good evening. My name is Glenn Andrew, 3553 Locomry, Kerrville, Texas. I am a registered and active voter in the Kerrville city elections. It is my understanding that the executive session tonight is to evaluate the form of our city attorney, Mr. Mike Hayes. I wish to add a few comments about my personal experiences with Mike, as while I worked with him, as I was on the city council recently. Mr. Hayes is the consummate legal professional and a superb city attorney. He is professional in every aspect of that word. He is exceptionally knowledgeable, skillful, attentive to details, while not getting lost in details. Even with a job which necessitates detailed actions, he is able to maintain a recognition of the top-level policy role of the council. Remember, that is your role, policy and operations oversight, for whom he acts as your legal advisor. There's not an easy balancing act, as his work almost always requires the delivery of detailed legal documents, maintaining a top-level understanding. I've had the responsibility for working with many attorneys in my business career and for over 21 years on being on that side of your deus. Never have I had the honor of working with an attorney whose legal skills, whose clarity, whose articulation, work ethic, ethics and integrity. Let me say that again with emphasis. Ethics and highest integrity is I have enjoyed working with Mr. Mike Hayes. He's the epitome of an exceptional professional city employee, and certainly deserves a rating as such. Any rating below that is a disservice to the city, the citizens, yourself, and absolutely certain for Mr. Hayes. I'm glad that conflict of interest, whatever they were a year ago, Mayor, have been resolved, and I trust you will set aside any personal agenda to lead the city, as you were elected to do, in rewarding Mr. Hayes a high-performance rating and a salary increase commensurate with his demonstrated performance. To do less is a huge failure on execution of duties, to represent the citizens of Kerrville, and a mandatory act of setting aside one's own personal agenda. In summary, Mr. Hayes is a superb city employee. He's a superb leader and deserves the respect and rewards of this status and performance. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Pelton, doctor, I think.
Kelly Pelton, I live at 1016 Creek Run. I don't know what else to say after Glenn, but I want to say just a few words of appreciation for Mike Hayes, whose integrity, professionalism, and thorough knowledge of the law have greatly benefited the city of Kerrville. His arduous research of legal matters has kept the city in compliance with legal standards. We are blessed to have good people like Mike Hayes in our local government to keep our community strong and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And John, is it Cybert?
That's correct. I have the name.
F.I.B. Yes, I...
My name is Dr. John Cybert, and I live at 607 West Water Street, for anyone who wants to come visit. I'm here to speak on behalf of my friend, Mike Hayes, and I could talk to you about his willingness to serve at church, but you've heard that. I could talk to you about the kind of friend he is that I would hope to be to any of you. That's the kind of guy he is. You know that, anyone who knows him very well. As an attorney, his job is to represent his client as best he can, just like any other attorney, even when his client isn't the prettiest girl at the ball. But he does that to the best of his ability every day. But more importantly, I want to represent the group of people that I interact with, a large number. They know Mike, know Melissa. They, there's a large number of people that support them, and they would be very, very upset to see any changes that would come about to Mike and his family through their, through his employment. He's a wonderful attorney. He's a wonderful person. Most importantly, he gives back more to the city than what he receives. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more speaker request forms, so I think if we're gonna deliberate, we'll either do it in or out.
I'd like to move, Mayor, that we award Mike Hayes a 3% increase in salary, as we are doing with other staffs and employees who rate the top evaluations.
Second?
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? Any discussion first? No? All in favor?
Well, I'll discuss it a little bit.
Well, are we gonna discuss in executive session the review or not? Are you, are you wanting to? First, what I have to do is entertain a motion for executive session, if anyone wants to do that.
I'd just as soon do a couple of things in public.
Well, we can do that after the executive session. I think it's, we should have the executive review first, so that we can have our survey that we did and all those things that we were given. We either discuss it out or in.
But I'm just discussing the motion I made. I'll just elaborate on that a little bit. The reason I'm doing that is that I think Mike Hayes has shown excellent skill, has handled the legal business of this city efficiently, expeditiously, with ethics, and beyond ethics. Mike Hayes is a patient person. Mike Hayes is a humble person. People who confront Mike Hayes in public, to the point of challenging his ability and right up to the edge of rudeness, are yet treated by Mike Hayes with respect, with generous time to discuss any issue at any length. He's never arrogant with laypeople. He never makes us feel like dummies because we don't know the law. He explains it carefully, respectfully, respectful to people, also respectful to the law. I think he's done a wonderful job. He is serving on a contract that was passed last year, three to one. The mayor recused herself. Her conflict of interest was not documented, but it's moot now. I think it would be good to give him a raise.
The motion is on the floor. Is there a second?
There was.
Yes.
There was a motion and a second, then we will, we will, we will vote on this first, and then we'll ask for another motion. All in favor? All opposed? Motion fails, two to three. I would move at this point that we move into executive session to discuss the performance review of the city attorney under 551-074. I need a second. Is there a second? Well, motion is second. All in favor?
Can I discuss this motion?
No, sir.
No?
It's already done. All in favor? Please raise your hand to go on executive session. All opposed? Motion carries three to two. So we will adjourn to the executive session at 7:27. Okay, let the record show that we are out of executive session and back into regular section, session at 8:49 PM. And let the record show there was no action taken in executive session. We are now on item, I lost the last page.
10A.
10A. Is that the action item?
10A.
11.
11.
11 is action on any, any action on discussion had an executive session. I will entertain a motion if there's any.
Yes. I'd like to move to allow the current contract to expire on its termination date while Mr. Hayes continues as city attorney as we negotiate a new contract, and that his evaluation be deferred for up to 60 days.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Could I ask a question first? Mr. Hayes, is that in compliance with the law? Can we terminate the contract but not terminate your employment?
For 14 years, you didn't work under one, so we considered that as two separate actions.
Well, for 16 years, I didn't work under one.
Yes.
Excuse me. I've had one for one year.
Right.
So, you know, and I'm advising, I'm advising myself at this point. I'm not advising you. So I don't...
My question is, can I vote to terminate the contract without terminating your employment?
I'll be honest. You terminate the contract, and I think that my severance kicks in. I'll be honest about that. I don't know. I think that there needs to be, and I'm happy to do it out here, there needs to be more explanation why the termination in 60 days. I don't know.
We, we had some issues with some of the terms of the contract itself, just the construct of it itself. And that's why he made a motion to, to look at a different construct, but not, not you, that you continue as you've been.
Sure, but you realize that the contract is... Sure, but you realize that the contract is my protection.
That, and he's willing to, and made in the motion, he wants to come back with a different contract, so I mean.
Right, but I'll be without a contract for sixty days.
Well, you were without, you were without a contract for fourteen years.
I was without a contract for sixteen years.
Sixteen years.
Yes, and so I think you understand my position. The contract protects me because it has a severance package, and, and I was very appreciative of that. That's, that, but that's my protection, so, I mean, and obviously, you all can do whatever you want to do, that's your right, but I don't know why a reasonable person in, which I try to be, would kind of accept that, not, not accept that, but why I wouldn't then avail myself to the provision for when my contract is terminated that I would seek severance. You see what I'm saying? I mean, that, I, without a contract, I go back to, and I'm, I'm an at-will employee no matter what, but if you terminate me under the contract, then the severance provision kicks in.
We're not terminating you.
No, I understand that, you're terminating the contract.
Correct.
Right?
Well, we, we let it expire.
Sure, and then.
That's, that's, that's different than I think, it's different than making a decision to terminate.
Absolutely. We're hoping that's different. I want to know legally if it is.
I don't, I don't think it is. I think that the contract as it's written automatically extends each year.
If you don't do anything, is what it says in B, if you don't do anything. We did do something. We're asking, Mr. Ferguson is asking that we have, he, the reason he asked for sixty days is the, the form that we had, we weren't content with, we didn't think it was applicable, to tell you the truth.
Sure.
Some of those questions are simply not things that apply to us in relationship with you.
I agree.
So it's not, it's not a fair assessment, is the reason he's asking for this, so.
I, I guess bottom line is if you, if, whether you let the contract expire, which would be a termination, because there's no provision for letting it expire, so what I'm saying is, if you turn, if you, if you go through that process and let it expire or terminate it, then I have no protection, and so I think a reasonable person would, at a minimum, be very concerned about that.
That's the motion?
Well, we're, we tried to take that into account by, the motion includes, you know, Mr. Hayes continues as city attorney as we renegotiate a new contract. Now, we, we intended that as assurance, if, I can understand your perspective, but our intent is to do what we think would be a better evaluation and get it, get back to you somewhere short of sixty days.
So I'm, I'm all about better evaluations, and I think you all know this, that I didn't have any input into that form. That was a form that I, I inherited and I even have expressed my opinion that we've used it over the last three years, four years, that it's, it's not good. But the councils at the time chose to use it, and that's fine. I guess bottom line is, what, why would we just not let the contract continue? And I know then your action is going to be, within the next sixty days, you're going to get a new form and you're going to go consider it again.
I think the question on the table is, is that a legal motion?
It's a legal motion.
Yeah.
Right, but I, but I'm telling you that what, what I'm going to characterize it as is a, is a termination of a contract.
It's, it's not, it's just the agreement, it is not you, so. Is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, then we must vote on it, all in favor. Would you raise your hand? All opposed? Motion carries four to one. At this point, we are adjourned at eight fifty-seven PM.